I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for getting quiet. It always makes me a little nervous when you guys get quiet. Now, I'm not quite ready to begin. We have the presentation of the colors tonight from Irwin High School. Please stand.
March, march. Cover, hop, left, face, reset, cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, cut.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Baldwin's comments.
You'd think we have something real special tonight. What could that be? I want to begin by thanking all of our students, our parents, our staff in the schools for helping us have such a great start to this new school year. I've visited classrooms in three of our six districts. It takes me a day per district, I'm getting a little older, but I really am amazed at how our teachers and students are so successful in terms of transitioning back to the classroom. Day one can seem like an organized chaos if you're standing outside the door and you're seeing the office area and lines as there's some late registrations. What I can promise you is if you walk through those school buildings and you look in those classrooms, our students are right on target. And I think that's certainly a reflection of the incredible quality of classroom teachers that we have in Buncombe County and the support staff that's there for them. The first week of school always produces some challenges. Administrators, I think you might agree with me on this one, especially with bus issues as well as traffic patterns. We tend to have a little bit longer lines trying to come into the school, but a lot of that will resolve itself over the next couple of weeks. And it stands to reason, especially for new students, the new kindergarteners coming in, parents, and we think that's such a good thing, are going to walk their students in and their children into those classrooms. So, it's just the way it is for the first couple of weeks of school. I want to also say kudos to Mrs. Finger out in the Anka Intermediate School area. She had some very challenging bus issues, but again, kudos to her and her staff, our maintenance department. I was out there this afternoon. Day one was really tricky in terms of coordinating all the buses coming from the feeder systems, but it went very smoothly today. And thanks to the patience of those Anka Intermediate parents as well. Earlier this morning, the State Board of Education officially released the 2015-2016 Accountability and Testing Results, including school performance grades. And overall, I can say to you that I am extremely pleased with our results, as 100% of our schools received a C or higher in terms of their school performance grades. Now, you... You may recall that last year, three of our schools received school grades of D and they were given the status of low performing. So, I am extremely proud to recognize Emma Elementary, Johnston Elementary, and Irwin Middle School for earning grades of C based on performance and growth. And I want you to listen to this. Emma and Johnston both exceeded their growth expectations. And by the way, this is Emma's third year in a row. You may also recall my call to the General Assembly, and my voice was joined by voices by superintendents all across this state to request to the General Assembly that the weighting of growth in the formula for these school grades be elevated. They currently represent only 20% of that school grade. And we believe strongly that for smaller schools, especially at the elementary level, that is a tremendous challenge. And let's face it, in schools and learning, it truly is all about growth. So, for them to achieve that in face of that formula, I think is just outstanding. We also want to commend our three schools that received grades of A. That was Early College, Middle College, and the Nesbit Discovery Academy. We're very proud of that. But speaking of growth, I want to recognize and give special recognition to Valley Springs Middle School. Valley Springs had the highest growth index of any middle school in the state of North Carolina, and they were the 12th highest of all schools in North Carolina.
Oh, we have to clap.
It is also the fourth year in a row that Valley Springs Middle School has exceeded its growth, so that is outstanding. You know what I'd like to do? I want to ask the principals of those four schools that I referenced and any of our Early College, our Middle College, our Nesbit Discovery, if you are up there, I know you're always behind the scenes and you want the recognition to go here, I would also ask any teachers at those schools that were referenced, please stand up so that we can recognize you for this. School boards, you may be receiving some questions regarding sixth graders participating in middle school interscholastic sports. And our State Board of Education, you may have read, recently made a decision that allowed the LEAs across the state and the school boards to make their own decision in terms of whether sixth graders would participate. The only sport that was excluded from that consideration was football. So, what I would like to do is in October, at our board meeting, to hold a mini-work session. David Ball, our district athletics specialist, I'm going to ask Debbie Bryan, who is our health and physical education specialist, and myself, we're going to come in and present information from a number of different areas. This is a complex issue. I think the majority of school systems across the state are delaying any type of decision until all the facts are in front of our boards, and I think that's very wise. There's not only issues regarding physical maturity between a sixth grader and an eighth grader, we're also talking issues regarding budget, regarding staffing, regarding transportation. So, it's a very complex issue, but hopefully, we can bring you enough information in October to at least let you begin the process of that decision. You will also be receiving an invitation for a groundbreaking ceremony that'll take place on September 22nd. I think the time is set for 5:30. The event will be held at the Irwin District's Lions Club. That's across from Evelyn Intermediate School. And we will be celebrating the groundbreaking. In fact, to be honest with you, the ground's already broken. There have been bulldozers all over the place. Trees have been taken away, and you can actually see a road's been cut in. The foundation, at least, has been leveled and prepared. But at any rate, we will be celebrating our building site for the Williams-Baldwin Teacher Complex, the 24 two-bedroom apartments that are scheduled to open. And we believe very confidently they will be open on June 1st, 2017. So, we're really excited about that. And I hope there's a few teachers in the room that might take advantage of that. Last thing I want to do, I'm so very proud of the leadership in this central office. Now, I'll tell you, Superintendent, they are so good that they can even make times a little questionable Superintendent look great. And that's exactly what they do. They are outstanding. And these central office leaders take state roles and state positions. And so, I'm going to ask Kristi Cheek if she'll come down. I think Kristi is here. She doesn't know anything about this, but she recently served in the North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education. And it doesn't surprise us, she was the president. They have honored her. They did not tell her they were sending me this, but this is a resolution in appreciation for her work. And Kristi, I've got to read it before I can get around to you, says, "Whereas Kristi Cheek has served as president of the North Carolina Association for Career and Tech Ed in an outstanding manner for the past 12 months. Whereas through Kristi's leadership, the association has grown stronger, more prominent, and more influential by the organization's accomplishments this past year. Whereas Kristi has represented the association at the state, regional, and national meetings in a dignified and professional manner. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the North Carolina Association for Career and Technical Education express their gratitude to Kristi for her time, talents, and personal sacrifices given in providing this year of outstanding leadership and services. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is being sent to..." It says Kristi Cheek, but I think we intercepted that, so you didn't know it was coming. "Dr. Tony Baldwin, Superintendent of Buncombe County Schools, and Dr. June St. Clair Atkinson, North Carolina State Superintendent of Public Instruction." If you do not know, Dr. Atkinson's background is entirely in career tech education. So, she gave me a call to remind me that this needed to be officially done. So, I want to step around, and if you're not aware of this, this is truly one of the state leaders in not only career tech education, but curriculum in the state of North Carolina. So, we appreciate you, Kristi, and I'm going to do my official duty per the state superintendent.
It certainly is wonderful when people across the state recognize what we have in Buncombe County. And we certainly appreciate what Kristi does. Every once in a while, she can teach me something. At this time, it is good news.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, Dr. Baldwin, a symbol guest. I'm a little disappointed, to be honest with you, Dr. Baldwin, that was good news. This is the good news section officially, that's what I'm saying. But I guess he can take the professional courtesy if he would like to do that. But tonight, we're very honored to acknowledge one of our new partners with Buncombe County Schools. We also have in our presence a New York Times bestselling author. He will speak to us in just a moment. But to kind of spill the beans, I'll let her have all the glory here, is Ms. Kelly Self, our lead media specialist for the Buncombe County Schools. Kelly, come on down and tell us what's going on.
Like Dr. Porter said, I'm Kelly Self, the lead media specialist for Buncombe County Schools. And I have been a reader since I graduated from Phyllis Stowe's class at Emma Elementary in first grade. Rock on, Emma. I see, there's Jeremy, her son. And so, reading is a huge part of my life, and I was so excited to be approached by Barnes &amp; Noble Asheville and by author Robert Beatty, author of Seraphina and the Twisted Staff and Seraphina and the Black Cloak, to partner with them and have a book fair at Barnes &amp; Noble in which the proceeds, a portion of the proceeds raised from the sales of his book and all of the materials purchased at Barnes &amp; Noble would come straight back to the Buncombe County Schools libraries. And so, I'd like to introduce Robert Beatty and Berant, I forgot your last name, I'm sorry, Benson, and Nicole Lowry from Barnes &amp; Noble. And they'd like to give you a little bit of background on this particular book fair, and I think you'll be shocked at how much support Buncombe County and Asheville gave us. So, Robert, if you'll come on up.
My name is Berant Benson. I'm the store manager for the Barnes &amp; Noble in the Asheville mall. I also have the newest colleague of mine on my leadership team, Nicole Lowry, who is our community business development manager. And just a minute, I'd like to introduce the really, really important guy. But I do want to say that Barnes &amp; Noble's mission has and will continue to be to support arts and literacy in the communities that we serve. And it was with that in mind that Nicole and I brainstormed, as we knew that Robert was going to be releasing his second book. Had a great partnership with Robert with his first release as well, that it was an obvious conclusion that we needed to find someone who could reap some rewards and benefits from the great sales that were naturally going to be brought into our location. So, with that in mind, Nicole and I really quickly partnered with Kelly and Dr. Porter, and they were very enthusiastic. So, there's a lot of people to thank before we present Robert and the actual amount given back and contributed, but mainly to Kelly for pulling together some great events and a lot of librarians and media specialists in the community into the store to help with the book fair on a really short turnaround. And to Dr. Porter also, who put together some really great Facebook and social media push for us to help make this successful. I will tell you guys, when I first met Robert, I'm naturally inclined to say, in a community that has so many great literary authors, I was calling Robert our local author, our local author. And I had to get used to calling Robert our New York Times bestselling local author. So, with that being said, I just want to thank you personally, Robert, on behalf of Barnes &amp; Noble, for creating the world that you created. I see the lucky, well, you probably see it too, Kelly, but I get the joy to see kids come into my store with this huge smile and glare on their face to pick up your book. And that is a very honorable position to be in, and we wouldn't be able to be here presenting this contribution to Buncombe County Schools without you.
I'm really proud to be here. I'm proud to be associated with the school system. I wrote, I started writing my books for my young daughters because I wanted to show them a very strange and unusual girl who had a good heart inside. And it was one of my dreams to be able to see that book go out into the world and have a publisher like Disney help me make that happen. And I'm happy to say that Seraphina and the Black Cloak and its sequel is now being taught in over a thousand classrooms nationwide. And that's really cool. That's really cool, because it's about a 12-year-old little girl who lives in Asheville, North Carolina, in Buncombe County. And so, the whole world is now reading about that little girl who lives here. So, I think that's a very neat sort of thing. So, Nicole's going to be presenting the money that we raised this year, but what I wanted to say more than anything is that I really enjoyed the partnership so far, and we've made a decision to keep going with it. So, my third book comes out next year, and we'll be doing this again. And... No news that nobody else knows. I've never, I've not mentioned this to anybody yet, but I thought it'd be a good place to do it. And in the spirit of continuing our partnership together, Disney and I just signed a contract for four additional books after that. So, you're going to be... After five or six years of this, I think you guys are going to be sick of me, probably. Thank you.
Donnie, that was great news.
Yes. Very good news.
All right. So, without further ado, obviously, we would like to present Kelly and Buncombe County Schools in Support of Literacy, a Barnes &amp; Noble gift card for $9,637.
Okay. Sam Goldman, right there, was one of them. They brought activities to Barnes &amp; Noble and engaged their readers, and they hung out with their people. The kids came in costume at some points. And so, really, this is for those media coordinators that gave their time. Well done, y'all.
I'm so not even kidding, when we were in Barnes &amp; Noble shooting some promotional pictures of this, Robert Beatty is a rock star. People, he didn't have a name badge on, people were stopping him and talking to him, and I just wanted to hang around him, because I like that kind of attention, even if it's indirect. So, Robert, if you'd just stop by any time around here, that would be great. But listen, thank you very much, Barnes &amp; Noble. We really appreciate that very much. Robert being here, and Robert's publicist, Scott is here as well. We certainly appreciate y'all making this happen. Another rock star with Buncombe County Schools is Mr. Joseph Huff, our assistant superintendent. He is going to introduce us to an outstanding bus driver. In fact, the Bus Driver of the Year, Mr. Huff. We call him Hollywood.
Well, if nothing else, you took the stress off. I appreciate that. I'm going to ask our presenter and Ms. Doris Sellers, A.C. Reynolds High School, and Mr. Edgar Waters, if he'll come on down. While they're on the way, I'll go ahead and read you what I have. "Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, Board Members. Tonight, we recognize a dedicated and hard-working school bus driver for Buncombe County. Asheville Oil Company, a member of the North Carolina Petroleum Marketers Association, sponsors the Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award. The award recognizes an outstanding school bus driver from Buncombe County, and we consider it our Driver of the Year." I'll tell you just a little bit about what we go through. Principals send in nomination forms with their write-ups with the instructions as to the following. "The recipient of the award should qualify by virtue of a proven safety record and extraordinary act on the highway, or by virtue of long years of service with no accidents." And I will tell you, I know the recipient, because he first started off at A.C. Reynolds High School, and I see he's wearing his A.C. Reynolds green tonight, so that's a good thing. And I will tell you, of those three things that qualify, he is one of those for sure, if not all three, I can guarantee you. I'm going to start off by letting Ms. Kate Thorpe tell you a little bit more about the award, and Mrs. Doris Sellers will present Mr. Waters to you.
Thank you. This Tracy Lee Calhoun Memorial Award for School Bus Safety was established in honor of Tracy Lee Calhoun, who was a 17-year-old high school student who lost her life when a school bus ran a stop sign in Raleigh and hit her car. She was on her way to her part-time job in an oil company. And as a member of the Association of North Carolina Petroleum Marketers, it is indeed an honor for us to continue this tradition, because just think about the tremendous responsibility bus drivers have every day with other cars on the road, weather conditions, disruptions on the bus, everything. And it's just an honor and a privilege for us to be able to continue to give this award. And it's really special for me, because as a family-owned business, my brother and sister rode bus 113 home from Charles C. Bell Elementary every afternoon with Mr. Bradley, our bus driver. So...
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Good evening, Madam Chair Franklin, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, and our guests. It is with great honor, scoot over here next to me, Mr. Waters, that I get to introduce the recipient of the Tracy Lee Calhoun Bus Driver Award, Mr. Edgar Waters. Mr. Waters has been a bus driver and custodian at A.C. Reynolds High School for 25 years. But I also have to say, his precious wife, Marion, has been a bus driver for our system for 34 years. So, when Mr. Waters kind of retired from his previous job, he wondered what he was going to do, and Mrs. Waters said, "Well, I think I know what you need to do. You need to get your bus license." So, she is the one that got him into this, and Ms. Waters, I am very grateful for you for that. But fortunately, we are not bringing Mr. Waters to you tonight because of a tragedy or having to be a hero in a particular incident. But we are bringing him to you because he is that daily hero. We never want anything to happen to our children, and his safety record proves that he takes that kind of care when he is driving. His ongoing daily love, care, and concern for our children is immeasurable. He is now driving children, of children he has driven in the past. I'm not going to tell you how old he is. My mother herself was a bus driver for many years, so this is special for me as well. And I also know the difficulty and the need for this important job. A driver sees students every day in ways we never see students. They see them in their homes, they pick them up, they take them home. They're the first and last face a student sees every day, and I'm glad it's not just a face, but it is Mr. Waters' smile that they see every day. Prior to driving in the morning, Mr. Waters comes in as our open-up custodian. So, he walks the entire building every morning at 5:30 a.m. to check it out. I know when I pull my car into the parking lot every morning, that our building has not only been inspected, but he has prayed every step that he walks through our building. I know when I open the front door of Reynolds High School every morning, he has said a prayer for me and for every other person that walks through the doors of Reynolds High School. And I thank you for that, Mr. Waters. I'm not going to tell you, again, I said his age, but you can see he has some years of experience behind him. So, he does not have to rise up every morning at 4:00 a.m. to come to school. He does it because he loves it, and also because Mrs. Waters is not ready to let him sit at home every day. But he also loves other things. He loves his family, and this beautiful family I hear about and I see pictures of all the time. His sister has driven up tonight from Charlotte to be with us, with other sisters, his children. He has five children, nine grandchildren, and this man is so proud of all of you. On Valentine's Day, Mr. Waters' tie is a picture of his lovely bride. So, he loves her and adores her. He's a pastor, he's an avid golfer, and he loves football, especially rocket football. He never misses a game on Friday night, and I know right where he sits. I go to look for him every Friday night as he is cheering those rockets on. So, not only do I not miss him on a Friday night, never a morning do I not hear, "Good morning, Mrs. Sellers." And if I do not hear that, I'm wondering, where is Mr. Waters? So, Mr. Waters, I am honored to be here tonight, to be a part of the Tracy Lee Calhoun Award. And I ask you, the audience, to please join me as we congratulate this extraordinarily special man for what he does as a bus driver for Buncombe County Schools. for what he does as a bus driver for Buncombe County Schools. He is a pastor, but he promised me he would not speak the length of his son.
Oh, by the way, my wife just said the same thing. Oh, boy. Wow. It's one of my favorite words. I like to post on the marquee down at the end of Rocket Drive when something exciting happens at Reynolds High School or in academics or sports. Mrs. Sellers will write out what she wants on the marquee. I like to add a little excitement to it, and I put the word "wow" with a big red exclamation mark. Well, who would ever thought I'd be in a public school system? And my wife is the reason for that. And she's here of a marriage, we've been married 53 years. And she said in the '90s, I think 1991, she says, "I worked at Kelwood Company for 24 years as a computer operator." And she said, "Why don't you take bus training?" I said, "Drive a school bus." So that's how I got into it. Working at Reynolds has been very exciting with the staff. I've worked on the four principals, Mr. Ron Dalton, Dr. Tony Baldwin, Dr. Lambert, and now Mrs. Sellers. And it's a joy to be planted there by the Lord. I love the students. And I'm thankful and privileged to be able to be employed at Reynolds. I call myself retired in 2004, and I was off two years. And by the way, I was down in business with my sister in Charlotte when Houston Harris, who's the head of the custodial staff, called and he said, "Edgar, man, we'd love to have you come back over." And it was a two-and-a-half-hour opening then. So that's how I came back. And so it's a joy to be there. And I just thank God for Reynolds High School and the public. When I go in the room to pray, I got a special place to pray over there. How about that? And I don't wanna be selfish, but I pray for all the Buncombe County high schools, elementary schools, middle schools, teachers, bus drivers, and even the students as they grace the door of the buses. I pray for each one. That's exciting. And God has got me there for a reason. And in my life, He wants us to bloom where we are, and that's exciting. And Mrs. Sellers, I'm glad she's a principal at Reynolds High School. She's very exciting, very friendly, very loving. And it's exciting to be able to go in every morning and just say, "Good morning," and greet the students in the commissary. I have a lot of them like to give me a fist. I like to just start by doing this, walking down the hall. And it's very exciting. Now I get to see some of their children, and they come up and say, "Man, you drove my mom and dad." So that's very exciting. So I'm so thankful to be here tonight. Thank you all, and I say, "Wow," again. And it's exciting. And I receive your prayers, each one of you, that I continue to do this and stay in good health. And I thank God for my family. I have a lovely family, I have nine grandchildren, and I have, my wife and I now have a great-granddaughter. How about that? Beautiful great-granddaughter, and that's very exciting. So thank you very much.
Man, would you like to join him, please?
Ms. Swanger? Time for our curriculum feature. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Porter referred to Mr. Beatty as the rock star, but we have quite the who's-who list with us this evening. We have the Buncombe County Rock Stars, and it's my privilege to introduce all of the Teachers of the Year this evening. So welcome to everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening. I know you've had quite a busy week. Nothing like coming back to school and then getting to come with us this evening. So it's almost Friday. I would invite Brian Gonzalez is our current Teacher of the Year for Buncombe County Schools. Do you have an outgoing crown that you're going to pass?
No, I need a gift one.
Okay. But as we recognize each district, we invite the board rep to come and join us as Dr. Baldwin as well. Let's get started. Mr. Queen, we're gonna start with the Inca District. So if you and Dr. Baldwin will come forward. And I was told to go slow to give time for picture opportunities, so bear with us. From the Inca District, Inca High School, Ms. Laura Roberts with Principal Tanya Robinson. From Inca Middle, Sean Dare with Leland Blankenship. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Molinari, Assistant Principal. If the district winners would wait on the side, we'll have one group picture. From Canler Elementary, Ms. Katie Owen with Stephen Chandler, Principal. From Hominy Valley Elementary, Mr. Matthew Davis could not be with us this evening. Let's recognize Melody Davis from Pisgah Elementary with Principal Jean Anne Yates. From San Hovenable Elementary, Nancy Smith with Amy Dupree, Principal. And let's give our applause to the Inca District Teachers of the Year. Congratulations, Inca District Teachers of the Year. We will have the Irwin District, Mr. Pat Bryant. Starting with Irwin High School, Amado Gutierrez, Chief Gutierrez with Dr. Jim Brown, Principal. And representing Clyde A. Irwin Middle School, Elizabeth Harwell with Principal Chris Thompson. From J.P. Evelyn Intermediate, Shannon Labrec with...okay, it's Jason, Assistant Principal, not Chip Cody. Come on down. Representing Emma Elementary, Deborah Henson with Principal Jeremy Stowe. From Johnston Elementary, Stacy Frazier with Principal Charlotte Hips. Holly Holcomb Gibbs from Lester Elementary could not be with us this evening. From Martin Nesbit Discovery Academy, Tina Evans with Principal Nathan Allison. From West Buncombe Elementary, Mike Martin with Assistant Principal Robin Payne. Representing Woodfinn Elementary, Deborah Osteen with April Wright, Principal. Representing Buncombe County Early College, Virginia Oakley with Dr. Donna Lanahan, Principal. Join me in a round of applause, recognizing... Moving on to the North Buncombe District, Chairwoman Ann Franklin, joining us up front. From North Buncombe High School, Jamie Stowe with Principal Jack Evans. From North Buncombe Middle, Loretta Atkins with Samantha Cersei, Principal. Representing North Wendy Ridge, Russell Thompson and Michael Benigno, Assistant Principal. From Barnardsville Elementary, Jennifer Van with Principal Dana Grimes. From North Buncombe Elementary, Angela Wool with Principal Deborah Devane. Congratulations to Paul Buckley with Weaverville Elementary with Principal Heidi Allison. Congratulations to Paul Buckley with Weaverville Elementary with Principal Heidi Allison. A round of applause for the North Buncombe Teachers of the Year. From the Irwin District, Mr. Craig will join us. From Charles D. Irwin High School, Samantha Gollman with Principal Meg Turner. From Irwin Middle School, Brian Orunchuk with Dr. Heidi Von Dolan, Principal. Brian, there's a proud mama trying to take a picture of you, too. Jan Deefenbod could not be with us this evening from Black Mountain Elementary with From WD Williams Elementary, Mary Jo Kuchenmeister, I hope I didn't butcher that too badly, we practiced today when I visited her classroom, and Dr. Sheila Gibbs, Principal. Next, to the Reynolds District with Representative Cindy McMahon. From AC Reynolds High School, Alan Cromer with Principal Doris Sellers. Representing AC Reynolds Middle School, Amy McCollum with Dr. Jamie Johnson, Principal. Representing Kane Creek Middle, Charles Palmer with Principal Karen Barnhill. Representing Charles C. Bell Elementary, Tina Walters with Principal Jenny Klein. From Hall Creek Elementary, Suzanne Hinesley, is Mr. Dale here? From Oakley Elementary, Lori Haug with Principal Dani Fusco. Next, the TC Robertson District with Representative Amy Churchill. From TC Robertson High School, Ms. Joy Keen with Principal Bonnie Johnson. From Valley Springs Middle School, Catherine Belair with Principal Eddie Birchfield. Representing Charles C. Coontz Intermediate School, Jenny Ostgaard with Principal Robin From Estes Elementary, Sandy DeGrae with Principal John Barber. From Glen Arden Elementary, Amy Harris with Principal Katina Spey. And from the Progressive Education Program, Amy Sheridan with Principal Larry Weigel. And right there, we have one more big announcement. Do we have any of the committee members who have been involved in the selection process with us this evening? If you are, please stand. The process to, for the teachers to complete a portfolio, the committee does interviews, and then next week, they're going to visit a few very special classrooms as we narrow down the process to the Buncombe County Teacher of the Year. But I have some special news, and I think we have a special, under lock and key, for the district winners that Dusty Plus, our member-at-large, gets to participate as well, Congratulations to the Irwin District winner, Tina Evans from the Nesbit Discovery Academy. And moving to the, and we're drawing these at random, the Robertson District. Congratulations to you, Catherine Belair, Valley Springs Middle School. From the INCA District, Sean Dare, INCA Middle School, come on down. From the North Buncombe District, Jennifer Van, come on down. That was the intention. We did it. From the Irwin District, Samantha Gollman, come on down. From the Reynolds District, Caitlin Sullivan, come on down. Congratulations to our Buncombe County Schools District winners from this group. You will soon find out, later in September, who the Teacher of the Year for Buncombe County Schools is. However, you are all rock stars. We are so glad to honor you this evening. Thank you so much for the important work that you do each and every day for your students, for your families, and for your peers in your schools. Now, I suggest that we give this group a round of applause and then let them go home and do lesson plans because they got to work on- It's now time for public comment.
My name's Mary Ann Tierney. I live in Fairview, and I wanted my son to start school at Fairview Elementary this week. Instead, I am homeschooling him because of the high levels of microwave radiation in all of our schools. All of the wireless devices in schools emit this radiation at industrial strength. I'm a registered nurse and a former public health educator. For the past four years, I have been studying the effects of non-ionizing radiation through the international EMF scientists. There are now 221 scientists from 41 countries who have appealed to the UN and the World Health Organization for meaningful safety standards for microwave radiation. The World Health Organization's International Agency for Research on Cancer classified the radiation from all wireless devices, including Wi-Fi, as a possible human carcinogen in 2011. This May, the U.S. National Toxicology Program announced findings of the largest study ever conducted on cell phones. They found cancer in one of 15 animals who were exposed, or 5.8 percent, very significant for cancer. This was full-body exposure at levels less than FCC safety standards. This study will likely lead to a new classification of microwave radiation as a carcinogen, the same as tobacco. The American Cancer Society named this study as "Good Science" and noted the dose-response effect: More exposure equals higher risk. The high-dose response levels in schools is due to multiple routers, many users, downloading documents, multiple frequency bands, and the beacon signal, which is the part of Wi-Fi that breaks DNA. The other factors are smart boards, iPads and Chromebooks held close to little bodies and brains, and multiple cellphones, all emitting radiation at once. The biggest problem is the cumulative effect of all of this on our most vulnerable population: children and babies carried in utero by teachers. Besides cancer, other serious effects include infertility, seizures...
Thank you.
I left packets for each of you that has all this information. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Christiana Dillingham.
Hi. This is such a joyous occasion, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight to honor teachers who work countless hours for my children. My name is Christiana Dillingham, and my sons attend Irwin High School and Irwin Middle School. And they have been blessed by Ms. Harwell and some of the other teachers that have been honored tonight, so it was a pleasure to be here. I'm here tonight with concerns echoing Mary Ann's. It's a serious topic, and it can kind of make your brain turn off, because it's just serious and complicated. But I have become very concerned about the adverse effects of micro radiation and our, microwave radiation in our schools. And I'm gonna run down a few things that, some things to consider. The former CEO of MicroScoff in Canada runs a, the Citizens for Safe Technology, and he put together an analysis of 50 studies of just Wi-Fi alone. Fifteen studies found alterations in brain chemistry, 15 studies found oxidative stress, 11 studies found DNA damage, 10 studies show damage to the immune and cardiovascular system, nine show abnormal sperm and testes, 10 studies demonstrate behavior and learning challenges. Both of my children suffer from learning disabilities, and they come home tired from school. And after I consider these studies, it makes me concerned that this is part of their fatigue. They get away, break a Wi-Fi at our home, they sleep in a home without Wi-Fi, and get refreshed and regenerated. But this is, there are no studies that prove that wireless technology is safe. There's none. And we've been rolling it out in our schools at a breakneck speed. And so I think we need caution and wisdom around this issue. Our children do not, and our teachers, our beloved teachers, don't need to be the testing ground for this, this serious, this serious health concern. Let's turn off the Wi-Fi and think about giving us radiation-free schools. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next public comment is Mary Smith.
Dr. Baldwin, board members, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Mary Smith, and I'm employed by Public Health in partnership with North Carolina Department of Transportation's Safe Routes to School Program. And speaking as a public health specialist, we want to see kids moving again. Now, speaking with my Safe Routes to School hat on, we want to make sure that neighborhood groups, traffic engineers, and local officials are working together to make streets safer for pedestrians and bicyclists along school routes. Walking and bicycling to school offers potential to increase student performance in class and on test, reduce harmful congestion during drop-off and pickup, restore childhood mobility, improve our children's health outcomes and air quality. And I'd like to thank Buncombe County School Administration, and Mr. Huff especially, for the help in conducting our Safe Routes to School Student Travel Tally, and that gathered baseline data on how many students walk and bicycle to and from school. And as, I've provided you a graph in, in a packet, and it shows that some schools, of course, there's no walking and bicycling, because it's not, it's not safe. But you do have some schools in Buncombe County that walkers and bicyclers, walkers as high as 13 percent, and bicycling as high as 2 percent. It's been great working with schools that participate in our National Walk and Bike to School Day events that occur in October and May. And last spring, we had five schools in Inca School District conduct the Walkability Assessment, and we've had a few PE teachers add the new Let's Go NC Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Education to their program. And I've had the pleasure of working with Hominy Valley and Inca Middle School parent, Garrett Arts, who's one of the many, many throughout Buncombe County that are passionate about connecting to their community through walking and bicycling. Garrett couldn't attend tonight because the same night, this is the same night he attends his first meeting with the Riverlink Board of Directors as their new executive director. And Garrett is also the president of Connect Inca, whose mission is to connect communities surrounding Inca candlers through safe, accessible bike and pedestrian routes to neighboring schools, businesses, parks, and other transportation corridors in Asheville and Buncombe County. So on behalf of Connect Inca and many other supporters throughout Buncombe County, I'd like to encourage the Board of Education to increase emphasis on getting more students walking and biking to school. And this will likely involve incorporating Safe Routes to School strategies in transportation and facilities planning. And we hope also to collaborate with the school system in seeking grants to fund infrastructure on the ground.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Baldwin from Fairview, former school board member. It was a joy to serve, and it's a joy to continue to advocate for our parents, students, and teachers. My concern tonight is on your action agenda, where you'll be voting to approve a Construction Manager at Risk contract for the community high school renovation. My concern is with this program called Construction Manager at Risk. And what the general public probably doesn't know is that instead of bidding out a contract for a school, you are now awarding a contract to a general contractor without any bidding at all. And this contractor is selected based on qualifications, not price, whereas in the past, contractors were selected based on qualifications and having the lowest bid. In fact, the Inca Intermediate School, which was just completed, cost twice, almost twice as much as Koontz and Evelyn Intermediate Schools. And now the two Asheville City Schools that have recently been built using the Construction Manager at Risk program are among the most expensive schools built in North Carolina. I remember from being on the school board that at least 18 general contractors wanted to bid on the Inca Intermediate School project, but instead, you use the Construction Manager at Risk approach, and there were no bids for that contract. So the Construction Manager at Risk gives a maximum guaranteed price after the school board signs the contract. This is not doing due diligence to the taxpayers who are funding this school and potentially wasting millions of taxpayer dollars that could be spent in the classroom on teaching and learning instead of brick and mortar. The contractor's profit margin can be increased if he gets the low bids from the subcontractors. So the only bidding that's occurring is that from subcontractors to this Construction Manager at Risk. In fact, I'd like you to also consider possibly postponing this vote, because the community high school ranges from about 119 students as of the end of 2015, the last year I could get data on, and projected to 150 students possibly for this year. Owen High School has room for these students, plenty of room, if you wanted to have a school within a school, which is what most districts in North Carolina are doing. This would actually be an advantage to those struggling students at the community high school if they were put in Owen High School that's just down the street, literally, from the community high school. The capacity at Owen's only at 78 percent.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Action Agenda, which is the community high school addition and renovations approval of Construction Manager at Risk. Are there questions or comments about this item from the board?
I have a question.
Please, ma'am.
I don't know if this is a question for our attorney or for Tim...
Come on down, Tim.
My question involves safety, since this, it's not like the Inca Intermediate School where we have a site and there are no students, there are no staff, no teachers. This is, obviously, this is gonna be a phased project with the students and staff on-site. And so I just am wondering if we adapted this contract in any way to sort of amp up the safety and security so that the contractors and subcontractors are contractually bound to be sort of super-safe? Or is this kind of the standard contract in terms of safety?
In, in every contract that we enter with a general contractor, they are required and responsible for all safety measures. The designer and the owner's representative can insist on additional measures if necessary, and it's in the general contractor's best interest to develop a plan to maintain that safety. In addition, the fire marshal, the building inspector are looking out for safety. And in this project in particular, while there will be students on campus, they're gonna be very segregated from the construction work. So the, the entire construction area will be fenced off and isolated, and the only intermingling might be one or two contractors that have to go in, check in the office, and, and get access to an electrical panel or something that they need to do on a temporary basis. So I'm confident that we have a, a good plan to maintain safety and isolate students and staff from the construction activities.
Okay. Thank you. Other board members with questions?
Madam Chair, I have one question, and I guess it's more for those in the audience and the public. Could you, how succinctly can you explain the difference in the, I guess you would say, the pros for using a construction management versus going outside and bidding individually?
Yeah, traditionally, we have used the design, bid, and then build process, and we've had mixed results. Evelyn and Koontz are two most recent projects before Inca Intermediate finished late, and that, that was a tough thing to take and trouble for us. And we looked for an alternative method to protect us from that sort of occurrence. The Construction Manager at Risk allows selection of a general contractor who does not perform any work out on the job. He's not hanging drywall or doing foundations. He's basically acts as the owner's qualified representative out there to manage the construction process. Because all the projects, or all the subcontractors' contracts are bid in an open environment, we get to see all the subcontractors' bids. Typically, when you do a design, bid, build, all you see is one big lump sum. The, the great advantage of that is that we get to see potential costs during design, so we can make intelligent decisions during design based on those numbers that are coming in from subcontractors, not as a bid, but as advisement to the general contractor. So we can be assured that the project will be in budget when it bids, and we can make intelligent decisions on things we need to perhaps cut or modify that are maybe costing more than, than we really want them to, so we choose an alternative method material that is inconsequential to us. So the reality of it is that when the general contractor bids in an open public forum, all the subcontractors work, that probably amounts to, I would say, 90 to 95 percent of the total cost of the construction cost of the project. We're getting to see competitive bids in, in Evelyn and Koontz. It was almost 100 subcontractor packages that the general contractor prepared that we got to review and saw the bids of all those 300 subcontractor bids. So the proof is in the pudding. Inca Intermediate was a world of difference in the, I think, the cooperative attitude we finished on time, which is very important to the school system. And I don't know how you put a cost on that. The general contractor, the Construction Manager at Risk, works as a team member with the designer and the owner to ensure that we get a high-quality product. He gains no advantage of, of cutting things short, so he's our eyes and ears out there. He wants to produce an excellent quality building, and we use his expertise, I think, to do that. And you've got to have a good Construction Manager at Risk, and we were fortunate that we, we did have a, a local Construction Manager at Risk that's embedded in the community, wants to continue to work here. If you do a design, bid, build, you may get an out-of-town contractor that comes in, and we're just a one-shot deal to him. He doesn't care what his reputation is, and it's a chance you, you take. And I think this very much limits the, the risks of the owner and fixes the costs in a, in a good way.
Thank you.
Mr. Fairley, in the title of the, of the construction company, Construction Manager at Risk, the words "at risk," can you, can you clarify and elaborate a little bit so people understand? They really are, by virtue of being assigned this project, they're assuming the risk that it would be built within the guaranteed maximum price, I assume, and then if it went beyond that, is that the entire risk they're taking? Or can you just clarify?
If there is an increase in scope of the work, say, the owner decides they want an addition onto the building, and that would exceed the, the, the cost of the project, of course, the contractor would be entitled to additional costs because we've increased the scope. But if there is a, a quality issue that's identified by the owner or the designer, they're still required to meet the specifications, and they have to work it out with their subcontractor to bring the building up to the, the quality and meet the specifications. If they finish late, there are liquidated damages, financial penalties are issued to the general contractor. He, again, if he wants to blame a subcontractor, that's their problem and not the owner. The owner would receive those liquidated damages.
Thank you.
Other board members with questions?
You know, I just want some clarification, because I, I heard the previous speaker. The initial question, Mr. Fairley, increased efficiency, and I might add that in, in my tenure as superintendent and associate superintendent in terms of buildings, the Inca Intermediate Project was by far the most efficient, smooth operation, on-time operation that I've been associated with. There's also a reduction in change orders. That's part of that at-risk, because significant costs have been incurred with Buncombe County School... Schools projects because of additional change orders in the previous model. And third, bottom line, it has the potential to save considerable money. Am I correct with all three of those?
I think you are, and I think that proved out in the Inca project. Again, the proof is in the pudding, and those are good clarifications.
And finally, just in terms of patterns and directions, it's my understanding that building, construction across the state of North Carolina is moving in this direction for those similar reasons, primarily, again, the efficiency and the cost-effectiveness of using that model. Did you agree with that?
Yeah, there is a trend in that direction which demonstrates that it is an effective method. And you reminded me, Dr. Baldwin, of one other kind of very important condition that exists now that the Construction Manager at Risk delivery system provides. Right now, we are in a very heated construction market. It's very difficult in the projects that I do in-house, that maintenance does, and what I hear from my architect colleagues to even get contractors interested to bid your You can get general contractors very often, but they will drop out if they cannot find subcontractors. What the Construction Manager at Risk process does, it starts early in the design process. You pre-qualify subcontractors. You get them interested, you get them involved, and you use the relationship of the general contractor with all those subcontractors that they've worked with for years and years and to bring those subcontractors in. When you do the design, bid, build, you may only get one drywall bid, and the GC will have to use that. We don't see that, but it may be a bid way up here. By getting subcontractors involved early, we can ensure that we get three bidders in each of those potentially 100 subcontractor areas. So I think it does result in savings in that way because you're going to get competitive bidding. They know they're bidding against someone else and not just one subcontractor.
Madam Chair, one more question, please, if I could. There was a reference to the Asheville City School System and those particular projects. We have no association with those projects in any form or fashion, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fairley, what about the contingency at Inca Intermediate School?
So in a general contractor's bid, he's going to put in that...we don't see the contingency, but there's going to be a contingency in his bid for unknowns. He may not get a bid on bid day because he doesn't know who's bidding of, say, that drywall contractor. He's got to make his best guess, and he'll put money in for that, among other things. The Construction Manager at Risk process lays out a contingency out there to be used for benefit of the project. And if at the end of the project that contingency isn't used, there's a split in that contingency. So what that does is motivates the SEMAR at Risk not to have change orders and use that contingency because that's...half of that is his money. He's got skin in the game. So that's a huge thing. And I'm glad to report that the change orders versus the contingency, we're going to get a big kickback, half of that contingency on the Inca project. And I'll have that for you next month.
Thank you. Other questions from board members? I would entertain a motion for community high school... What? Sorry. Community high school additions and renovations, approval of the Construction Manager at Risk contract. A motion to approve Hickory Construction Company as the Construction Manager at Risk for the community high school additions and renovations.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Excuse me?
I was just going to second.
You're going to second it?
She got it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would also report that the Hickory Construction Company was our Construction Manager at Risk for the Inca Intermediate School. Thank you. The Consent Agenda, we have the minutes from open session on August 4th. We have the personnel report, advocacy, advisory council members for '16-'17, advisory council member change, and policy 9115, which is the pre-qualification of bidders for construction and repair projects. And we're going to waive first reading of that policy in hopes of adopting the policy tonight. Are there questions from the board on any of these items in the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the items in the consent agenda.
So moved.
And it's second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The Information Agenda, there's notification of informal construction and repair contracts and change orders. The board will receive that as information. And again, I want to remind the people that are here, the board gets reports in advance of this meeting so that we can read them and pose questions to our staff members in that regard. We have policies for first reading. Most of these policies are...
Technical corrections.
Thank you. They're technical corrections, trying to align ourselves with what the state board has suggested that we do and also with the law. And if any board members have questions concerning these policies, I would ask that you get your questions to Suzanne Swanger in a timely fashion, and then we will vote on these policies at the October board meeting. In our announcements, I'd like to let you know that the Teacher of the Year banquet will be held September 21st, 2016, at 6:00 at the Renaissance Hotel. The superintendent's advisory council will meet on September 26th, 2016, at 6:00 PM at Nesbit Academy. The Board of Education regular meeting will be October 6th in this building. And the district-wide advisory council meeting will be held October 18, 2016, at 6:30 at the Nesbit Academy. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn...
Madam Chair, moment of privilege, please, before we adjourn.
Oh, certainly.
I would just like to take a moment to mention the stop-by of the Evelyn Tools for Schools distribution of the school supplies after the Tools for Schools gathering. And they have a...it's quite an ordeal and an undertaking to watch what they've done and all the work that Evelyn does for us, but to see that. But I want to recognize someone in attendance tonight. I want to recognize Ms. Julie Ball with the Asheville Citizen Times. The media takes a lot of hits in the world we live in for a lot of things. And as I walked in to stop in, who did I see manning one of the tables distributing the items for those kids going through there but Ms. Julie Ball? Julie, I just would like to say thank you for that. I wanted to recognize you for that because that was a good day for me when I saw you in there, so thank you.[1720.16][1720.16](APPLAUSE)
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?